Good evening and welcome. I'm not sure exactly where I'm looking right now because we have, we're in a hybrid session. I'm the only one with Alex.
Look straight ahead, Adam. No, straight ahead.
Adam, the camera is straight ahead. That's it.
All right, very good. So now unfortunately, I won't be able to see you folks. You'll be seeing my better side. I'm Adam Block, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I call this meeting to order. This meeting of the planning board is being conducted in a hybrid manner. It's all Zoom since I'm in the room. Right, correction. I sit corrected. Thank you, Alex. This meeting of the planning board is being conducted in a remote manner consistent with state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. We have two, actually, no, we don't. We have, we do have one hearing scheduled tonight at 7:05, but we'll come to that momentarily. For the record, I'll now confirm attendance of the planning board members and staff. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. Paul Albert?
Here.
Artie Crocker?
Present.
Jean McKnight?
Present.
Natasha Spata?
Present.
And we'll note the Chair, Adam Block, is present. From our planning department, Lee Newman?
Present.
And Alex Plea? Excellent, thank you. For those participating in this meeting tonight, please be aware that anything you share or state will be a matter of public record, and others will be able to see you. All supporting materials for this meeting are, including the agenda and our packet, are available on the town's website at needhamma.gov. Again, that's needhamma.gov unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. I will introduce, if we have any speakers on our agenda, and I may ask our board members for any comments, questions, or motions. And with that, I'd like to start us off. Our first item on our agenda is actually a hearing, a continuation of the hearing for major project site plan special permit number 2022-03 with the applicant Welbow 4 Needham Landlord LLC with respect to a property located at 100-110 West Street in Needham. I understand that we have received a request from the applicant to continue the hearing. Does anyone have any comment or question at this time? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing to, Lee, November 15th at 7 o'clock. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I make a motion to continue here to November 15th. You said 7 o'clock?
Hold on.
7:00 PM?
We're meeting on Thursday, December 15th?
No.
This is November 15th.
November 15th.
Oh, November 15th.
Yes.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to continue this hearing based on a request by the applicant for November 15th at 7:00 PM. Any discussion on the motion?
Can I just confirm the time, just to be technical? Is it actually 7:00 or would it actually be more like 7:05 or 7:15 when the hearing would be?
Depends if everyone gets in on time, but we're going to go at 7:00. Any other discussion on the motion?
No, but I just want to point out that what I have on my calendar, all planning board meetings, that were sent by Alex Plea, and because I did not put them on my calendar, but they were put there by an invitation from Alex, all these upcoming planning board meetings are on my calendar for 7:15.
I have the same, I have the same number.
So Alex, if I may suggest that when you have a chance, doesn't need to be done right away?
I can update them.
Maybe, maybe you can go in and resend these invitations so that our calendars are accurate for 7:00 meetings in the future.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, while we're in discussion mode of this motion, I just want to say that I think this is a very positive development that the applicant is exploring possible revisions or modifications to its currently proposed project, as the letter put it. Very pleased to hear that.
Well, we look forward to seeing whatever those proposals or proposed changes are. I don't know what they are now. So it's a good indication that they're open to, I think, the messages that they have received from all parts of the town. So I concur with you. Any further discussion on the motion? Eric Nunn will come to the vote. Paul Albert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Natasha Spata?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. We have continued this item to November 15th at 7:00 PM. The second item on our agenda this evening is the decision with respect to major project site plan review special permit amendment decision to the, to application number 2017-01 with respect to a property located at 29-37 Franklin Street in respect of the petitioner Sierra Naturals Inc. Doing Businesses Air. We've received the decision. I have a number of comments. I'm not sure if other members do as well. Does anyone else have any comment?
Yes.
Okay, so we have comments from Jean, we have comments from Paul, Natasha, or Artie. Do either of you have any comments on the decision at this time?
The only comment, but more like an observation or something like, I know we were talking about having this be a, where they have to come back for a full hearing, and I know we've decided that's what we're deciding. I have a little reservations. I'm not going to change my decision, but I had a little reservations of why that was really necessary. Because treating them, I think it feels like we're treating them differently than is really necessary. I don't envision, I don't envision that having an impact on what the final is, final decision is when they come back. So I just have a few reservations about that. That being said, I'm not going to change my mind.
Okay, so we're not, so I understand that you have no further comment on the decision. I understand your reservations. I'm going to take these comments in the order that I saw them. So Jean, I'm going to go with you, and then Paul, I'll come to you, and then I'll speak last. So Jean, would you like to take us through your changes, please?
I don't see my comments as being substantive, but rather just consistency in reference. And also, there is a typo on page two, section 1.3. First line, there is a typo in that the words "the following" should be deleted. So that it should read, "The petitioner is now requesting that the 2017 special permit be amended as follows."
Good.
So the words "the following," I think they're inadvertent. Then in section 1.7 and section 1.9, I think a reference to the prior decision, section 3.7 should be inserted the way it was up, just up above in section 1.6. So that when we speak of section 1.4, and I'm reading now from this decision, section 1.7. Section 1.4 stated that the marijuana, medical marijuana facility will only dispense medical marijuana products, et cetera. It should say, "Section 1.4 stated and section 3.7 required that the medical marijuana facility..." And if Lee, who drafted this, disagrees with any of these changes I'm discussing, I really welcome her response. But I think that the same should be in section 1.9. It should say, "Section... Section 1.9 of this decision should say, 'Section 1.6 stated.'" And it says states now, I would use the past tense, so it's just, so it's just the same as the prior ones. "Stated and section 3.7 required that the attached Jurassic will house the van." Then my, my last comment has to do with two sections of the proposed decision. I realize that when, that when we're reciting what the applicant applied for, it was appropriate to say, you know, we list them all, first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth. Then it says on the first page, "Seventh, by making such additional amendments, the original decision dated June 13, 2017, as are needed to comport with the preceding proposed amendments." But in fact, we did not make any additional amendments to the original decision. It was, so you know, it's, it's just thrown in there usually in case they need it.
Well, the reason I left it in there was I was concerned that, you know, I didn't draft this decision to go back and actually look at the primary decision and amend language in it to make it consistent with these terms that you were now changing. So I thought that was a catch-all that I was trying to capture it with that phrase.
I see. Well, as I said, I think it's appropriate on the first page, the third paragraph of the decision, but I question its appropriateness on our vote. And of course, our vote was whatever our vote was. So if we use that language...
No, you haven't voted yet. You just gave, you just, we just had a conversation about this and you, we talked about the framework for this decision. We haven't voted anything.
Okay, so, you know, when we come to the vote, we go down, you know, we're giving the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth relief.
Right.
And seventh, "by making such additional amendments to, to the original decision that are needed to comport with the preceding proposed amendments." You, you think we do need that vote?
Well, the only thing I was concerned about is if there's, if there's a condition in the base permit that gets modified by this vote. I haven't specifically called it out.
And the same language is at the end of, it's kind of odd the way, well, I mean, it's at the end of section 3.2 under, under...
Well, I mean, I think, Jean, we could eliminate it and just assume that these, that these changes that you voted modify anything in the base permit, and then there won't be any ambiguity, which I think is what you're concerned about.
Right, you mean, we should, we should do what, Lee?
I think maybe we should do what you recommended. Then it makes it clear that that's the only relief that we've granted, and if that relief modified something, then that's assumed without this other language, which tends to confuse it.
Good, I appreciate that, that response. And so to be clear, it would be in our vote that we haven't taken yet, we would not say seventh and go on, you know, but we would certainly say what's at the very end.
You get, yeah, you would say, you get rid of it.
With the benefit of the following plan modifications.
Correct, correct, correct.
And then when it comes to section 3.2, if, I guess what I would say if, whoever is making the amendment would say, "With, with the changes discussed tonight," and that would take care of the typo and the two references to section 3.7 and the deletion of those, of those lines. Okay, that's, that's what I have.
Very good, thank you, Paul.
Yeah, before I get to the changes that I caught, I think I'm understanding, Jean, but I want to make sure, and I'm agreeing with it, that number seven, although it's probably appropriate that it stays in the third paragraph on the first page because it was requested, but seventh comes out everywhere else.
Yes.
At section 3.2, and it comes out in our vote.
Yes.
I agree with that wholeheartedly because we are not, we are not making additional amendments as are needed to comport with the preceding proposed amendments. We are adopting those proposed amendments. So I have two, I have two issues, and each one kind of shows up in multiple sections. In Attorney Smart's letter, they request that they're allowed to purchase marijuana products other than those cultivated and processed at the petitioner's Milford facility. And even though he just says marijuana products, their permit is only for medical marijuana products. And I would like to add the word "medical" in the places where we talk about marijuana products other than those cultivated and processed at the petitioner's Milford facility. So that in the, in the third paragraph on page one, one, two, three, four, five, six lines now, number four, it says, "by allowing sales of medical marijuana products."
Which, which section, please, Paul?
This is, this is on page one in, in the third paragraph. This is, this is under fourth. Fourth, "by allowing sales of medical marijuana products."
Yes.
And then this shows up again in section 1.3.
Yes.
And it's reiterating, "Fourth, by allowing sales of medical marijuana products."
And then on page four?
Yes, on page four, in the therefore, under fourth, "by allowing sales of medical marijuana products." And that's the important place because that's our vote.
And then at 3.2 as well on page five?
Yes, 3.2 as well on page five, correct. And I think that does that issue.
Good.
Now, the second issue that I have is we are adopting these amendments in two, in two areas. One is things that are perpetual, and some are things that are only for eight months. And my recollection is that the purpose of having the eight-month requirement, the temporary requirement, was so that we could monitor traffic and parking and possibly, I mean, I, I, I think that the request by the police department is that we, that we check out the traffic and the parking. But also, there was question about, questions by the abutters about the, the customers or the clients hanging around after they purchased their medical marijuana and...
Using the product on site.
Using, and using the product on site. And so I think, I think we're also monitoring whether it is bothering the neighbors, if the, if the customers and clients are continuing to do that. And so I questioned whether all of the ones that we're voting to be temporary really should be temporary. So we have as being permanent the change of name, which is fine.
Yep.
And, and changing the Massachusetts Department of Public Health to the Massachusetts Cannabis Control.
Okay, Paul, but I, while you've mentioned that, I just want to clarify that because I went back, Adam caught this this afternoon. I went back to the Board of Health memo, and the Board of Health takes the position in their letter to us that both parties have jurisdiction. So we should, I think what we should be doing in that other one is basically extending it to the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission, but retaining the Department of Public Health.
In addition to as, in addition to the Massachusetts Department of Health as applicable.
So wait, wait a minute. Let's be clear. It's the Cannabis Control Commission, and it's definitely the Needham Board of Health. And the Needham Board of Health is saying that the, that the State Department of Public Health also has retained jurisdiction?
Yes, they say the State has.
Not just the Needham Board of Health?
The, this is exactly what they said in their memo to us. They said, "The Board of Health agreed that both regulations need to be followed. Along with the CC regulation, the Mass Department of Public Health standards specifically, and they list the chapter, has to do with sanitation standards for food establishments, must be followed specifically for the production, preparation, and storage, dry cold holding of edibles or marijuana-infused products, as is written in the Needham Board of Health Article 20 Regulation, to ensure sanitary and safe operations of marijuana treatment centers."
So there, so Paul, there's a distinction made between the, the handling and safe conduct and practices around the production and sale of, you know, of medical marijuana products in whatever form they are. And yet, there is a unique provision where some of the medical marijuana product is an edible, and there may be an overlapping jurisdiction.
Okay, so in second, what's listed as second throughout, it's going to be by requiring the petitioner to comply with the requirements of the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission in addition to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health.
That's what my comment to Lee was earlier today.
Okay. And when we recite the, what they applied for, even though they didn't use those words, do we insert those words?
Both in. Good question, because that's not what they applied for.
Yeah, and it's the 1.3 and, and the third paragraph on the first page that is reciting what they applied for.
And what they applied for is what they applied for. I think it's just in what we find and what our conditions are.
Right, so, so it should probably, is it, does it, let's take a look at the findings and conclusions. That would be paragraph 1.3.
Although that paragraph 1.3 is also just repeating their request.
That's not, okay. That's not the applicable finding.
So 1.3 stays the same, except that we're adding the word "medical."
And I'm looking, I'm looking for what...
Well, maybe we add another finding that, that indicates that.
It would be in 3.2.
That's of our condition.
That's where it would be.
Yep, in 3.2.
In addition to the requirement.
In addition to the Massachusetts Department of Health as applicable.
And don't we need the word "requirements" or something? In addition to the requirements of the...
And they did, yes, that's fine, the requirements of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health as applicable.
Okay. In three.
So, Paul, you were in the, you were talking.
Yes.
And then...
Sorry, Paul.
No, it's okay, Lee. It was helpful.
No, this is important that we get this right.
So what was, what other comments did you have?
Okay, so my question is whether we have first and second as being permanent.
Yes.
And we have third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and well, we're taking out seventh. So my question is whether the appointments only, oh, well, I think we need to discuss whether the requirement of appointments only is really something that affects parking and traffic. And so it should not be permanent. It should only be temporary. And especially the one about allowing sales of medical marijuana products other than those cultivated at the petitioner's Milford facility, which is, which is fourth. I don't see why that should be temporary. I think that should be permanent. That doesn't affect parking or traffic or the use by, by the customers after they've purchased.
Well, it does speak to the breadth of product. And that can...
What does that have to do with traffic and parking?
Well, it could if there are less, if there are fewer products, it'd be fewer, fewer impacts.
No, it's not fewer products. It's just a question of where they can purchase it.
Yeah, I agree with Paul.
It's not just a function of purchasing, hold on, Artie. It's not just a function of, of purchasing it, though. It's, it's basically, they have a grow-up, as I understand it, when they say cultivated and processed at that facility. They want to be able to, they want to be able to buy and acquire other products to sell that are not, that are not manufactured at their facility, which by nature means that instead of having some products, they would have more products.
No, but it's thoroughly, it means to me that they're substituting products.
Yeah, yeah, it could just, it could just be that. We don't know, we don't know for a fact it means additional products. It means the products that they're selling, not all of them. Some of them may come from somewhere else. As Paul says, it could be a substitution. We don't, we don't know what's happening. We don't know what's happening with...
Adam. The amount of product that they sell
Yes.
is a function of how many customers they have, how many orders they have.
Of what they can sell, of what...
They're going to sell a lot of product.
Well, there's a distinction I make, there's a distinction I make on what they actually sell is what's sold. But what is for sale is a different matter. Whether it's true, like Artie says, that it's a total substitution of or in addition to. I mean, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm not judging it. I'm not commenting whether one is right or wrong. I'm simply, I'm simply pointing out that if they're allow, if we're expanding what they're allowed to sell, it is an expansion. Yes, go ahead.
Adam, if I may, the question is, why do we need to reexamine that in eight months?
We don't.
What is the function of reexamining that in eight months when the purpose of the eight-month requirement is to monitor traffic and parking and people smoking outside of the facility after they've purchased?
Because if it's possible that they have fewer products to, to consume on site, that they may have a tendency to consume less on site.
And I'm going to tell you that the amount of product that they have has absolutely nothing to do with where they obtained the product.
I understand that relationship. I just think that if, that if we're granting a special permit for additional relief, that other than the name change and the subject matter jurisdiction between the two state boards governing this as a whole, for those that are within our control, the police department was pretty clear that they wanted our ability to review all impacts. We're not limited to one or the other. I want it, our, the purpose of the review is to understand the concerns if there are any. So I don't want to limit the scope of that review. That's how I see it.
I'm going to disagree with you with my recollection of what the police department wanted. They didn't, I don't think the police department was asking us to review everything. I think they were asking us to review the impact on parking and traffic.
I think they were, my recollection was a little broader than that. It wasn't just limited to parking and traffic.
Lee, do you have the memo from the police department handy?
Um, let me go, I'll open up Citrix and get it.
And furthermore, and furthermore, Paul, we had testimony from their neighbors that said that there are concerns for other types of disturbances beyond parking and, beyond parking and traffic. So I think in fairness to both and to, and to ensure that we have the maximum discretion possible, that would be a logical... that we have the maximum discretion possible, that would be a logical thing to do. If the, if the rest of you, if the rest of you disagree, that's fine. All, you know, all, that's fine. But I'm just saying that it doesn't seem to me when we have reason to believe that there are other types of disturbances and that the police department hasn't narrowed the type of disturbances that they're interested in, that, that we would, that we would necessarily eliminate that as a temporary condition as well. Artie, I see your hand is up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I mean, as, as I think we can all recall at the, you know, several weeks ago, when we were first looking at this and deciding what we do and what, and what guidance that we, you know, Lee was looking for. Um, I think it was clear that some, some of us were hesitant about having them to come in for a, let's say a full hearing again. And just basically just come in as a review, just come in a little bit more review to make sure things, how things were going. It does not seem necessary to hold them to a standard well, you know, well beyond any other type of, I, I phrase it well beyond what is necessary.
Well, we've actually, we actually can, we, we concur already though.
Please. Yours, you, you guys were speaking for a long time. And so, and so we, 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 you know, we concur that we're going to have them come back in for the, for the review. But it seems unnecessary to review every single thing. I was hesitant to have, to have the full review at all. Um, I just, I voted, I, I, I put an agreement, signed an agreement, as Lee was asking for, and I respect what Lee is asking for. I think it's totally unnecessary for, for this, for everything to come under review again. Is if they keep, they came in and said, you know what? We, we would like, you know, we would like the opportunity to have, you know, purchased products somewhere else as a substitution. Or for whatever the reason being is, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure if we've had all the reasons why they want the substitution. I don't see a reason for us to, I'll use the phrase, act so much like a big brother to come in and kind of, you know, slam them as far as what, what they are requesting here.
And you think that I'm slamming the party? Artie, you.
I'm exaggerating the word a little bit. Okay, I'm exaggerating the word a little bit here. So I think it seems unnecessary as what, what, what could be perceived as a big brother thing as far as, you know, they want the opportunity for purchasing product, not everything coming out of their warehouse. It seems unnecessary.
Artie, I understand. You, you raised your point. I understand your point. Let's go to some new comments.
I appreciate that, but that same point was being raised over and over and over again, trying to discount what Paul was saying. I'm agreeing.
So I'm going to, Artie, I'm going to move on to Natasha for another comment. Natasha, go ahead.
If I may, I'm not.
Artie.
With this issue, Adam. Adam, I would like, I would like to hear from Natasha and Gene, but I need to have them talk about all of the issues that I'm asking about as to whether they should be moved from the eight months to the permanent.
I understand, I understand that, Paul.
Explain which items I wish to move or I wish to discuss should be moved. Can I get it all on the table, please?
I, I see, I see. Yes, Paul, please. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. So this also goes to the question, and on this one I have a question. I I'm not as, as, um, firm as I was about the, the, um, where the marijuana products are obtained from. The question of whether housing the vans in Needham rather than in Milford overnight is an issue that really, and and I appreciate the fact that Alex has been sending us e-mails to try to get us to be able to see the, the police memos, but I'm not able to to work on that while I'm on Zoom and go to my emails and she, she's just giving me a link that's not giving me the memos right away. So.
I can read the memos if you want me to read them.
But let me, um.
Let's get it on the table firstly and then.
Right, I'm, I, I, I'm questioning whether requiring the vans to be in Milford rather than in Needham is something that, that we need to review in eight months in order to, again, it's my recollection that we're talking about parking and traffic and possibly people smoking on the premises. And I question it. I, I'm leaving that up for discussion, whether that should be permanent or whether that, that, that's something that, that needs to be reviewed. But I think that increasing the number of sales stations that, and, um, making it not appointment only, those do have to deal with, um, when the people are coming and going. And so that, that's a traffic and a parking issue. So, so those two definitely could be reviewed. And I, um, question the, the vans being in Needham rather than Milford and where the marijuana products are purchased from. Whether that's really something that we should be reviewing in eight months where it's for a limited purpose.
So I understand, uh, I understand your question and your, uh, comments. Do you have other comments? And I, Natasha and Jean, I see your hands up and I'm, I'm going to come back to you in a minute. But Paul, were there other comments that you had in the decision? And do you want to?
That's it.
Okay, good. Thank you. So, uh, so first I saw, uh, Natasha had her hand up first, Jean, so I'm going to go to, uh, Natasha, then I'll come to you. Natasha, go ahead.
I just have something quick, just to make sure that I understand. It looks like in September 14th, um, that, that the police said that they would have a major concern, you know, with the increase of customers, but then, you know, and the impacts of traffic. But then on Monday, September 19th, he had spoken to attorney Smart and he's amenable to allowing the changes proposed with the review in six months to address any impact if any to the area. Because from what I had heard is that they basically had a decrease of people coming to the location. So is, is that accurate?
It's.
I have it in front of me and it is accurate. Yes.
Yeah, that's.
Also, if, if I may respond to.
That was my only, yeah, that was my only question. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that part. Okay.
Yes, but I do, just, just, gee, one second for clarity though. I think that first comment was a question about the parking. And I think, Lee, that was, might have been at a time before the planning board took a vote to, I think, allow 18 parking spaces. So I think that there was some confusion, there was some concern between the, the police department and, uh, some neighbors and also from the building commissioner of what the parking on site would enable and that a site visit occurred by the building commissioner. I don't know if it was by the police department, by the police chief. And then the planning board on their guidance resolved the 18 parking spots. So that was part of the issue. And Natasha, I think that relates in part to what you were saying. But Jean, the floor is yours.
Oh, I was only, um, pointing out, because I have the, the correspondence in front of me, that it's exactly as Natasha said. There was an email from, um, John Schittler, Schittler.
Schlittler, Police Chief.
Um, and on the 14th, raising some concerns on, and, um, increased traffic or increased patronage, which could lead to increased traffic. Then, um, there was a response by Robert Smart on September 16th to the concerns that were raised. And in, in, in his response, he refers to Scott Thornton's follow-up traffic study to the 18 parking spaces, that this is not recreational marijuana, that business volume has been down. Then, uh, John, uh, Schlittler responded. Um, I'm, I'm, I spoke with attorney Smart, and so I guess he had more than just the email. There was a discussion too. I am amenable to allowing the changes proposed with the review in six months. So I, I just thought, you know, confirming what was said by reference to what I have right in front of me would be helpful.
So thank you for that clarification. I, I, I have other comments too, which I'll speak to in a moment.
And I have other comments.
Okay, Jean, you go ahead.
Yes, I, I want to agree with Paul. Um, I had approached this and I don't think I approached it carefully enough with the idea that um, we don't, that we'll approve right away and let them do things that, um, would be hard to undo. Um, and once they start with, um, item fourth, allowing sales of marijuana products other than those cultivated and products cultivated in Milford facilities. Once they start dealing with cultivation, buying products that are cultivated elsewhere. Um, you know, that's a big effort on their part and, and kind of hard to undo, you know, with prod, you know, streams of, of the products, making them available. So I, I, and I don't see that it matters with regard to what we're concerned about. So I would move fourth up to section 3.2 of things we're simply allowing. And then the same with item six on the delivery vans. Once they've made it, whatever changes they need to make to accommodate the delivery van on site. Um, why do we care whether it goes back to Milford in eight months? I don't understand why we would care about that. And although it's not probably a big burden on them to make that change, why do we even want it?
Well, I think it is. I think they were saying that it was a significant burden. In fact, because those vans would otherwise go back, they would return to Milford empty. They have no product. And then it slows down their ability like for, uh, to then bring the vans from Milford with or without product, probably without, come to Needham, load up the truck. And then thereafter, go on their delivery run. I, and, and then return the van empty again, as otherwise they would have an empty van, but it saves them time if it's 40 minutes to get back and forth between facilities. It does save them time. I.
No, I understand that, of course. But what I mean is if we made it only temporary and then they had to undo it and bring the vans back to Milford, would that be a big burden? Just the physical relocation of the vans? You know, because they might have, they, you know, made all the races to the garage in order to accommodate the vans who.
I think all of.
I, I, I just think, what's the point? Move item six also up to 3.2. Let them have the vans on site. What do we care?
So I, 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 I understand.
And I think Paul has said that that was what he wanted, uh, and I'm agreeing. That's all.
I, I understand what you're saying. I understand what Paul is saying. And I understand already what you're advocating for as well. Paul will come to you in a second. And all I'm saying, and I apologize when I'm, if I'm not speaking clearly, is that clearly all of these items are designed to reflect a substantial change in their business practice to improve their business. And there is, and to speak to one point that Artie had brought up a couple of times, well, why are we treating this differently? We've, which is a good question to ask, because this is a unique use in the town that has not happened before. And our own police department as a function of public safety, in addition to the comments that we've received from other commercial butters and other area residents that, um, you know, that have identified other disturbances that as a matter of course, do we want to shortchange the planning board's authority and ability? Um, you know, to, uh, to modify, uh, temporary versus permanent, any of these, any of these uses. That's the question that I think that's the critical question. And if, if, if you all decide that, um, you do want to diminish, you do want to minimize the discretion of the board, uh, including any other disturbances beyond parking and traffic, then so be it. I'm not going to step in your way, but I just want you to be aware that this is a different use. We have no other use like this in town. And I'm not commenting on the validity of the use. And I'm not commenting on the validity of the business. But I am making a distinction where we're, as a matter of policy and practice, that in the future, we will continue to, uh, diminish the planning board's ability and authority. Uh, Paul, Artie will come to you after, but Paul, you had your hand up.
Okay, thank you. So, um, the reason why I said that the issue of the vans is something that I am questioning and not really s- saying it should definitely be moved is because it may have an impact on traffic early in the morning. Uh, I don't know. If, if the vans are already there, um, then it's, you know, seven, eight o'clock in the morning, you know, it, 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 it definitely saves the petitioner's time in terms of loading the vans and making their deliveries. And so I don't think that affects parking. That doesn't really affect any other safety issues other than possibly traffic. In the morning and when they're closing up and probably when they're closing up is not as much of an issue. It certainly does save the petitioners a lot of time. It also saves gasoline if they have to go back and forth to Milford twice a day. And then these, we're all concerned global climate change and what we can do to, to keep them from polluting the air with, with, um, uh, the carbon monoxide coming out of, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide coming, coming out of the exhaust pipes because they're not traveling for an, an hour and a half every day. I'm willing to move it over to a permanent change. I think we should move over to a permanent change. The question of where they, where they acquire their product, because I don't think that has anything to do with the public safety. So.
I don't disagree with you, by the way, Paul, on the question of public safety. It's just a function of how much are we prepared to, um, limit and reduce the scope of our own authority in these things. Artie, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, related to, you know, related to both, both these audits and so forth. I actually made me one of them. And I, I can appreciate when this article first came to be is, you know, if we have some concerns of where the product may be, perhaps, and I can understand when this first comes in, putting restrictions and wanting to make, to make certain where all the safe, you know, where are all the safety standards coming within this statement. So I can previously appreciate an aspect of that. I think we're well beyond that at this point. So I see no reason to be concerned about where they are acquiring the product related to the van. I don't understand, it's, I don't understand the logic in limiting that at all in the first place, unless of course, there was no way, no place for them to park it at the current facility, but now there is. It makes, it makes absolutely no sense to require them to move the van from, from point A to point Z when it needs to be point A to begin with. That makes no sense for us to step on that whatsoever. They should, they should feel free to be able to have the trucks, which, which is going to be most effective for their business model at that time, at that time. During the, during the day, that particular day, that particular week, they should be able to do it for themselves.
Understood. I appreciate that. So, so you're comfortable to reduce the authority of the planning board, is that right?
I mean, I, it's, it's, it's lovely to put it that way. It's not reducing the authority. We, we shouldn't, we, we shouldn't have, we, there's no reason for us to be burdened with where they're put, where they're parking their truck. And there's no reason for us to be burdened of where they're getting their product from. You know, this is a reg, this is regulatory.
There is, actually, Artie, for clarity, there is, because it's a subject, it's a substantive point before us. And the question that Paul raises, which is a good question, is a question of public policy. And the point of the review is to empower the planning board with enough discretion to, uh, to make further modifications.
We don't need, we don't need that discretion to decide where they're parking their truck. I say, I don't, we don't need the discretion of where.
And actually we do, because it's a specific relief requested, Artie.
And, and, and we're, and we're, and I am perfectly happy moving it over to a point where it's, is not subject to review in, in six, in eight, in the eight month period. I'm perfectly happy not having to review that, review that again. It seems unnecessary.
Okay, I appreciate your point, Paul.
Yeah, um, I, I raised my hand to to ask Lee the question whether she remembers why we required them to store their trucks in Milford overnight, because I can't remember why we had that requirement. I know we had the requirement. I remember the requirement. I remember why.
Maybe they had no garage to park it in.
No, they had the garage.
Let's ask, let's ask Lee.
I don't remember. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I don't remember.
So we're going to put a pin in this. I'd like to put a pin in, in this part of it and then continue with the comments that I had. And then we'll take all these pins out and, uh, and finish our decision. and uh, and finish our decision. Um, so I I I wondered if we would uh, where we make mention of uh, Cannabis Control Commission, and then we later say CCC. We don't actually define what the CCC is where it's written in one point five. So I thought either in one point four or we could do it in the third paragraph on page one. We'd simply say we're at the first sighting, the Cannabis Control Commission, and then um, uh, in bracket here and after the quote capital CCC unquote and close bracket that you know, then we then there's clarity in what CCC is because it's not other than by reference of one five. So I thought that was one change to make. Um, in one point six, I on page three, I with a sentence that reads in the middle of the paragraph, this leaves designated appointment times unused. Uh, and then I was going to suggest adding and unable to subsequently and unable to be subsequently scheduled. Uh, and then uh, in paragraph one point eight, at the last sentence, which reads uh, since the planning board's special permit already allows CERA, I was going to suggest, or I suggest that we include since the existing planning board's special permit to more clearly identify what we're referring to. And then in paragraph one point nine, there is a comment that says this restriction causes, and this is one of our findings. This restriction causes significant operational problems. I think we should before that, say, the petitioner claims this restriction causes significant potential, significant operational problems. Because we're not we're not asserting that it did. Um,
Good point.
There is in uh, uh, further on in paragraph one point nine, we're allowed to maintain and operate two vans. Should we clarify? Um, should we clarify that we mean, uh, although attorney smart uses the word maintain and operate, and I think that's where Lee sourced those words from. Maintenance would be a different use. If they're, you know, if they're making repairs on the on their vans, if they're changing tires and changing oil. And I don't know if we need to add further clarity on that. We're allowed to hold and operate two vans as opposed to maintain because, you know, there are other similar uses to car maintenance in the in that geography. Um, we've already talked about the comment that I raised earlier today to Lee about preserving the appropriate discretion or authority of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Um, then I think the next comment I had into grant the following I requested permits. Um, right. I I apologize. So uh, to the two thousand seventeen special permit for a limited time of eight months. I the petitioner would be able, is able to submit an application for any requested extension no sooner than six months in the date of this decision. Because I don't, I think we want a six month review period. And so instead of within, no sooner than. And I think that um, uh, for a limited ti- uh, limited time of eight months, uh, the petitioner is able to submit an application. It's not that we're necessarily requiring requiring them to do so. The other changes that I had have been made um, in the paragraph. Um,
I think, Adam, I think the six month requirement is the time period by which they have to make their application if they want to extend.
Right. I agree with that. And what I'm saying is they can't make an application sooner than six months.
No, it's the other way. We don't want it to be later than six months.
So in two months, they can apply for a review?
Well, they can apply for the review. We're not going to hear it until until eight months have gone by or or well.
Six months, six months, six, six months.
So I just want to be clear that that the review period is for is six months.
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to review in six months.
Paul, but is there a clock, Lee, if they make an application? If they make an application the day after we approve this? Is there a clock?
Lee, you're muted. Lee, you're muted.
Still muted.
So yes, there is a clock, but I don't think they'll be making an application on something where they know our intent is to have something operational for six months, and then we're just going to turn around and deny it. I think that's an unlikely outcome. I mean, there is a clock. I mean, once they file the application within sixty five days, you're supposed to schedule a hearing.
Sixty five days. Okay.
Oh, I think we need
Say, but not sooner than four months, within six months from the date of this decision, but not sooner than four months from the date of this decision?
Yeah, because Adam, if they can't make the application for six months, and then we've got sixty five days to schedule a hearing, that's beyond that's beyond the eight months that the um,
So then five and a half months? They can submit an application no sooner than five months or five and a half months?
Five, maybe five months makes
Five months, five months.
Five months, okay. Not four months, five months.
That, but that's the review period itself. So Lee, we have sixty five days. Are those calendar days or business days?
Business days.
Whoa.
Whoa, that 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 ticks away.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I misspoke. It is calendar days. It is calendar days.
So we have sixty five calendar days. So we just don't schedule the hearing as a matter of practice. And we need and we can, and we really want the police comments after the six month mark. So if they, if they, so five months gives us another thirty days. They apply in uh, in five months, then we've got thirty days more days to get to the six month. And then we need comments back from the police chief and any other board. But I think it's really likely just the police department and public safety. And then we have enough time to give notice for the hearing in less than the sixty five days from the date of their application at the fifth month. Does that timing work for you, Lee?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Good. Uh, thanks, Paul, for the clarification. Um, I'm just at paragraph three point two in our conditions. We will have to modify those dates and we'll have to modify the dates in the uh, activation clause with our vote. Um, and same with three point three. Those were my comments. So now the only unresolved issue is with respect to Paul's list of um, I, sorry, I've got a diabetes alarm going off here, uh, but I can suspend that. Thanks for your patience. Um, so Paul, you've, I think you you framed it for our review that you're proposing the permanent conditions be the change of name, the change of authority that governs their operation, the vans not having to go to Milford, and the product supply, the expanded supply of product are all permanent. And that what would remain as temporary is there um, is there a move from five sales counters to seven sales stations? And uh, the appointment provision, the removal of the appointment provision. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll vote, I'll vote last. Let's do this by straw vote.
Do we need, do we need, do we need a motion to, oh, for those changes or just?
We will, we will after this. This is just a straw poll to see where the board is on this matter. So Paul, I presume that you're that's what you're advocating for? Is that correct?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Artie, I presume that you concur.
Correct.
Okay, uh, Gene, do you concur?
Yes.
And Natasha? All right. So for the record, I understand the um, I understand the changes that you're advocating for. I do see that the issue of the vans and the issue of the product supply, they have specifically come to for relief on. And if we, and I do see as a matter of public policy that we're effectively shortchanging the planning board in six months from, you know, excluding those provisions. And personally, I don't think that's I don't think that is an appropriate uh, reduction in our authority. But I'm not going to uh, stand in the board's way. I just want us to acknowledge, though, that that is the impact of that decision. So now
That's putting words on our, that's putting words on our mouth. I don't, I don't put words on our mouth that we're shortchanging the planning board. Because we 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 kind of gave guidance to Lee as far as what we want to review in in eight, let's call it eight months. And we decided we do not want to review some of these other items because it's unnecessary. So we're 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 keeping under review the things associated with the volume of, you know, volume of people coming in and how to schedule in their scheduling their appointments. We're not sure, we're not shortchanging anything.
Well, we're, well, you you recognize that we're reducing our authority, correct?
Not reducing, we're not reducing our authority.
Adam, I'm, yeah. I'm going to disagree with you, Adam, because I think we always have the authority. If somebody comes in and complains what the, that the, that there's too much traffic or that they they've they've been, they've been using more than eighteen parking spaces. And so the parking spaces are are um, are being affected. And let's say the reason that they're using they're that they're using excess parking spaces is because they're parking the vans in the parking lot during the day.
Yes.
Um, we, we still have the authority. When somebody comes before us, somebody actually would go to the building commissioner and make a complaint about the traffic, make make a complaint about the parking, possibly go to the police department and make a complaint about people smoking i- in the middle of the street on uh, on Franklin Street. Um, and so it comes to us and we ask the petitioner to come in and speak with us. I I think we we still have the authority to modify our our permit at any time in order to alleviate whatever it is that that has that has been a problem that has been created. And if we decide that that um, uh, the reason that the parking situation is bad or the traffic situation is bad is because is because the vans are there overnight. We can decide to amend our permit. You know, we'd have to have hearings. But we can decide to amend our permit so that they have to store their vans in Milford as an example.
So we can revoke that at any time?
Yeah, well, if we follow the proper procedures.
Yes, of course.
Here is what are we going to review as a matter of course in in six to eight months?
Okay, so I I'm satisfied. I appreciate that discussion. Uh, and I'm also grateful for the opportunity to get clarity. Thank you. Um, so shall I have, can I have a motion to accept uh, the, wait, should we have a motion first to accept the revised relief and then a secondary decision?
Right.
For the decision itself?
Let me, let me make the motion for the relief. Okay, so I move that that this board grant the following requested amendments to the twenty seventeen special permit permanently. First, by authorizing the activities permitted at twenty nine dash thirty seven Franklin Street Needham to be conducted by CERA Naturals Inc., DBA Air or I R.
Air.
Air. Second, by requiring the petitioner to comply with the requirements of the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission in addition to the requirements of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health.
As applicable.
As applicable. Thank you. Um, fourth, by allowing sales of medical marijuana products other than those cultivated and processed at the petitioner's Milford facility. And um, sixth, by eliminating the requirement that the delivery vans for home deliveries be housed at the petitioner's main facility in Milford and by allowing two vans to be kept in the garage at the facility. And I further move that the board vote to grant um, the following requested amendments to the twenty seventeen special permit for a limited time of eight months until June eighteen, twenty twenty three with an application to be submitted for any requested extension. Um, no sooner than five months of this decision, parentheses, by March eighteen, twenty twenty three colon. Um, third, by eliminating the quote appointment dash only end quote operational requirement for this facility. And fifth, by allowing an increase in the maximum number of sales stations from five to seven. Um, I believe that's it. That's the motion.
Paul, I'm going to just simply say before you get a second that that is a definitely proposed motion. Do we have a second?
I've been practicing law for for forty seven years, Adam. It's about time I'm able to do this.
Hallelujah.
It's about, it's about time you put some of that into practice, Paul.
So we have a motion, so move by by Paul, a second by Artie. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, please.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that I I followed the changes. If I'm looking at um, the write up of our vote on page four, therefore, the board voted five to zero. Are the changes limited to uh, in the fourth line after messages Cannabis Control Commission would be inserted in addition to the requirements of, and then the Massachusetts Department of Public Health? And the other change?
As applicable.
Uh, oh, okay. As public, as applicable, right?
Right.
Uh, and then um, down on uh, for the fourth item, uh, the insertion of the word medical.
Correct.
Then the deletion of the seventh item.
Correct.
And is that all?
And then moving um,
The other two items will be
From from the second pair, from the second section, which is um, temporary to the first section, which is which is permanent.
Right.
We're moving the vans and we're moving
Oh, yeah, for a special for a limited time of eight months. Oh, there it is right in our vote. Yes, and we want, want to move those around. All right. Thank you for that clarification. I was just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Very good. I'm, I yes, Alex has a question.
I just want to make sure, is it okay that I renumber them so that it's one, two, three, four in the permanent and then five, six in the temporary?
Yes.
Is it just makes more sense to me?
What we organize it, Alex, so it accomplishes the statement.
I've got it here, Lee. I just wanted to make sure that that was okay. Um, I'm redlining it right. I'm redlining it right now.
Excellent.
That makes sense.
I'm so glad you're doing that in the moment because I can't imagine this conversation being clear. Well, I, so that is a motion. We have a second. We've had our discussion. I'll come to the vote. In alphabetical order, Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Natasha Spada?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We have adopted a motion for the relief accordingly.
May I just point out that that was not alphabetical order because a Spada comes before McKnight.
Oh, shoot.
We're co-chairs. We're, I'm okay.
I, I'm so sorry. I, I, that was just a goof on my part. You're right. Thanks for calling me out.
Try to do that as often as I can, Adam.
And, and you're rarely wrong, Paul, so I'm grateful when I'm corrected.
When I was here, I always just-
No, I'm never wrong, Adam.
I always just went by where the, pictures of the people were on my screen.
I know.
That's how I do it too, Jean.
So now let us discuss a motion to accept our decision dated today with the revisions that we have discussed and accepted.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Paul, a second by Jean. Any discussion? Hearing nine, I will come to the vote in alphabet, in proper alphabetical order. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Natasha Spada?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have completed our decision. I do see, Lee, that Bob's attorney smart is in the attendees. Have you, have you, from time to time, it's not uncommon for the board to have a conversation with the applicant about these, about the changes that we're making, is that?
Bob, Bob saw the draft that you, that you reviewed tonight and before you changed anything, he was fine with it. So I'm sure he'll be happy that you gave him more things permanently than temporarily. He was happy with the draft that was originally presented to you.
Well, he can thank Paul, probably. Probably not me, though.
Just a reminder to sign it in the office. Thank you.
Yes. Four time here, I can do that. So that's, so that's good. And-
May I just quickly ask, will, will that be available for signing tomorrow morning or should I wait until Thursday?
The office is open and it's available.
Okay, it will be there tomorrow morning.
Yes, it will. Thank you.
Thank you.
I I think I need a five-minute recess to deal with a diabetes malfunction. I need insulin. My levels are rising too rapidly and I need to fill a new pump. Can I have a motion to recess for five minutes?
I move.
Second.
So are we able to put a sign that says, all right? Now, are we recording the? We are. Okay, so I can do some of this.
Aye, on the recess.
We need a motion? Let's take, we have a motion. All right.
I, Adam, I think as chair, you can just declare a five-minute recess.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think so.
Okay. I'm not sure if you guys can see me fill my-
No.
No.
You're off the screen.
That's good. Sorry for this, guys.
I can turn on the TV and find out if-
That's your chance to that's your chance to relieve the camel. So we know they can't hear us. No one can hear us or see us on TV. What about on Zoom? But I'm definitely not going to attach this in front of the camera just in case. I don't want to get charged with, you know, a, what does that guy do? What was his name, the attorney on CNN? Remember, he got busted for inappropriate behavior in a Zoom camera?
Oh, gosh, yes. Oh, blinking on his name.
Yes, he's Jeffrey Toobin.
Yeah, that's it.
Good. Thanks very much for the recess. I don't anticipate us going more than an hour at this point. We don't have, we don't have any minutes. We have very little correspondence. A little comment from the board, from the board planning director, but Lee, but beyond that, I think it's just a discussion for 40 minutes, maybe even less on our planning goals.
Very good.
So.
Thanks for a very easy night.
Doesn't it?
Which you're due.
Right? Yeah, I'd say so. Thank you, Mark. All right, now the hard part. I can go in that door, right?
Yes.
There's no one there?
There should be. They're going to be a custodian, I guess. You'll be fine in there.
Just got an email from Bob that the decision to change is all makes sense.
Great. Well, thanks for listening. I think we're back. Jean, can you hear me?
Yes.
It looks like we're all back except Lee, but hopefully she'll be back in a moment. Artie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Can anybody hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can hear you fine. Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you for the recess. I'm now back in action and the insulin seems to be working, so I'm grateful for the indulging. Thank you. In that recess. So the next item on our agenda is continued discussion on our goals and so forth. In the days that we've, since we last spoke about this, which I guess was what, Tuesday? Is that right? I don't remember. The days blurred together. Today's Tuesday. I guess that was Thursday. I've spoken to, I spoke to the chair of the Climate Action Committee. And Lee, what I would like you to do is to send an invite, please, to, to Hank Half and to copy Stephen Frail and Nick Hill. And I suppose, and I can send you offline. I was going to announce it here, but I'll send it offline or give it to both you and I and Alex. The chair is Stephen Frail and the vice chair Nick Hill. For them, I'd like them to come before us in the next, in the next four weeks. And I'd like them to provide a presentation of 20 or 25 minutes in length of of where they're at with the struck, with, with their own plan, with their action plan and what initiatives they would like us to advance or where we can help them advance. I'm mindful of our clock that we would really need to be in motion and have effectively a draft, some draft changes by the end of the year. So I'd like, I'd like to bring them in in the next month or so, and then we can move forward from there and identify what changes we might be able to advance in the short term. Does that make sense?
Could you give an example of changes, Adam? You're speaking of zoning bylaw amendments?
So there, yeah, so some examples may be making, adding some definitions for some specific greenhouse gas techno, reduction technologies. So we would add some definitions and then we would consider, I would like to see us, I'd like to see us add the definitions and then modify our dimensional requirements in any and all districts so that they do not include the mechanical items that we would then define, which are the greenhouse gas reduction technologies.
So Adam, can I, can I interrupt you for one second just to let you know? So I'm, I'm the planning board member of the CAPC, working with Stephen Frail and the rest of the group. And I am in charge of the, I'm the chair of the working group for zoning, specifically the items that you're mentioning right now.
Okay, great.
We just had a kickoff meeting last night. Artie is there. He's, he's leading one of the other groups.
The natural resources group.
And so basically, we are, we have three months. So within my, I have a working group and that working group consists of the, the building inspector. It's Justin Savignino, is that how you say his last name?
Yes.
Who is one of, he was the assistant engineer, town engineer. It includes Lee and it includes Oscar Mertz. And so we're going to be, we're going to have three meetings in the next three months to discuss exactly what you're talking about. We're going to be looking at other towns and looking at their zoning and looking at their climate action plans to see what they, what they were able to achieve. And, and then get back together as a larger group to make three to five recommendations to be implemented, you know, to, to, to move forward. So that's happening, except it's, it's probably the recommendations will be given in January. So just to give you a heads up that, that we're already in the work, it's already in the works and we're doing all of our research in the next three months.
So that's great. I thought there was, when my conversations with Steve, it seemed as though there might be a couple of things that we could get ready for May. If, I understand your timeframe and I don't want to interfere in your work, so the consequence of that timeframe, if I understand correctly though, is that if you're resolved with your recommendations for some zoning changes or regulatory changes that I, that if, that if you complete your recommendations by the end, by January, that doesn't really make them viable because we would need, we need to take those into, turn those into draft bylaws by then to be able to hold hearings and speak to the select board, the warrant committee and have them refer it back to us and hold the hearings. I don't know that we could make it unless we might be able to make this special based on the discussion that we had, I think, last week.
I guess the question that I have is, there, this is led, this, this whole CAPC is led by the select board, right? And so there's also, there are people from the FINCOM and other groups that are within this group. And, and if we're looking at other bylaws from other towns as examples, could we, you know, as a, as a group, recommend something in January that could still happen in April? Lee, I don't know. I mean, I'm just throwing it out there. I feel like we're, we're just getting started and it, it would be shortsighted to just put together something right now without doing all the research.
Yeah, I, I think we want the research and the recommendations that we're going to then, that we're going to implement, you know, and we'll have to, I think it would be very tight to get it done in the spring. I mean, I think it's possible that maybe something, if it's really low hanging and easy, when the recommendations come out in January, could be done at, at a special. And I think it's probably more, more practical to be targeting the fall.
Okay.
However, I think what's, what's, this is leading me to believe is that we, not only are we looking for those three to five items, but also if we can also gather what the bylaws are for the other towns, we can have a leg up on creating any bylaw changes or, right? Because we don't have to reinvent it. We can just, but I feel like with this, this moment of research, of dividing all this research amongst our groups and, and, and getting all that information is pretty critical in making informed decisions.
I, 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 I wasn't meaning to, I wasn't meaning to fall outside of your- fall outside of your, of your program. And I do think that there, you know, that you're, you have an established rationale and a reason for that. And I, and, and I support and accept that. When I did, when I took a look at the MAPC report, I think from maybe November of 2021. And then there was a summary of some action items that seemed that those, regardless of what other jurisdictions were doing, it seemed as though there were some items that we could, you know, potentially, you know, a solar, a solar bylaw, some other things that I do want to see us on this, the topic of environmental reform, is as a matter of our, I think, I think we can do it for use and certainly for site plan special permit that we add as a special, as an additional criteria, the environmental impact of the project. So for instance, if a project is coming to us that has no lead certification, that it's, you know, it's a commercial development that is, but you know, doesn't have, generate any greenhouse gas reduction and doesn't employ any of those technologies. And they're asking for the maximum FAR, maybe there's a scenario where we don't grant an FAR as opposed to another, another applicant, another project who is implementing a number of, you know, green standards and increasing and adopting greater greenhouse, greenhouse gas reduction technologies, they're asking for the maximum FAR. I might be more inclined. Jean, you see you have your hand up.
I, I want to ask how the likelihood of the state having a new stretch code in the near future. I mean, we have a new administration coming in. There's been talk of the issuance of a new stretch code. Not clear exactly when that's going to happen. And I, I wonder if Natasha could speak on that because there's certainly an element of this work. And if it's a little, still a little up in the air, that's another factor.
We, yeah, we thought that the stretch code was going to happen at the beginning of the year. So in, you know, two, two months, two and a half months. But we think it's probably going to be pushed to a second or third quarter of next year. That's speculation. We thought it was going to happen because some of my projects were, you know, were trying to get permitting before to be grandfathered in, even though, though there was an area for grandfathering, just because they were so far along in design. So Adam, I, you know what, we're, we have our first meeting, hopefully at, at the beginning of November. So I think that some of the things that you're saying, we're researching as well. I think once we have that first meeting, I can, we can report back and see if there are things that feel like low hanging fruit.
Yep. Yeah, agreed. I think that's a great reckoning, great suggestion.
Because everyone in the, in, in the working group, I tried to keep the working group small because as we've learned from the Housing Working Group, the larger it is, the more difficult it is for people to get together. And so we, we might have people that we might reach out to in addition to our smaller group. But within our group, Dave Roach has so much experience already with some initiatives that were happening in town where he has experience with these things. And then Justin has experience from Newton and other areas. So we, we have practical experience. We have design experience. We have, you know, planning experience. So I feel like we just need to vet, vet it from all sides to make sure that we can be successful.
I like it. Are you right? And I, I defer to your good judgment there. Thank you.
But what I'll do is I'll make sure that at every planning meeting, we, we give an update.
One of those things, that's, that's helpful. One, and we certainly have that in our agendas for Planning Board Member and Planning Director reports. Why, one of the items that I that we, that might be on your low hanging fruit near term, might be the and a bylaw amendment that would enable, that would enable photovoltaic panels, solar panels, you know, by right in town and not by, not require a special permit. You know, we're having a hearing coming up on 140 Kendrick and the application is only as a result of a special permit for, you know, for, to put solar panels on the roof. And I'd like to see us administratively to avoid that requirement.
I, I think it also would help us in general. And I think the Housing Working Group's work is also going to help us in general. If we change any of the bylaws, then it's, it, it gives us a pathway to be able to review projects, you know, easily or in an easier way if, if, if they do get adopted versus us trying to make recommendations that may or may not be adopted by, by the different projects. It feels like we should, we should look at, you know, the town holistically and see how we can create these avenues for, you know, for sustainability that, that then are more, to, and in my mind, more equitable.
Good. Good. I don't have an update on these other items. I, I have a call in to, to our Town Council to talk about some of these structural reform items. So does anyone else have any other comments on our, or additional suggestions on our?
Yeah, I mean, going into the future, talking about solar, you know, I mean, it's something obviously I have a lot of experience with. But I would like to see it's something, something in the zoning that gives, gives homeowners a right to have solar in the home, whether they're a homeowner, homeowners association or not in a homeowners association. Right now, I'm particularly referring to a homeowner's association where they can restrict, restrict it, but, but the, but the restriction is not coming in the form of, you can't have solar, it's coming in the form of, you can't modify anything outside, outside your house. And all it takes is one person to object and all of a sudden someone can't put solar on their unit. And so I think that means we looked up, is I've had a number, a number of people, so I've said, some people say that it really bothers them. They're looking to move because you get into situations where they lose that right to, to reduce their greenhouse gases in one person's job. So at some point in the future.
Artie, I question the legal ability of the town in a
private.
In a zoning amendment to limit the authority and the discretion of a homeowners association to make their own rules.
I agree.
I agree.
Well, okay. I mean, I don't know, I mean, obviously I don't know for a fact whether we can or can't. I mean, if, let me put it this way, if we're, if we're giving a, if we're giving a builder, the authority to build certain amount of units, we can certainly have the authority to say they, they cannot deny a homeowner's right to do something, for example, solar.
At the time of, at the time of approval of a subdivision, for example.
Correct, correct. That's, that's what I'm referring to. I, I'm sorry. My apologies, Paul. That's what I'm referring to. I don't see us going, I don't think we can go backwards. I'm talking about anything going forward is what I'm referring to.
Okay. When there's a subdivision plan in front of us.
Yeah.
Where there's going to be a homeowners association. And so we've got some discretion.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm referring to. Thank you, Paul.
Did you take what will be in the homeowners association documents? Interesting thought.
Jean, you would your hand up as well?
Yes. You know, at the long range planning meeting last Thursday, there were two things that I mentioned that I thought we would want to have relatively quick action, you know, in the next, in, in the 2023 annual town meeting rather than way off in 2024 annual town meeting. And what I'm thinking of two things. Working with the zoning board of appeals to change our zoning bylaw with regard to three car garages. And that is something we actually might be able to do in the next few months and even have on for this 2022 annual town meeting. But I just want to wonder what, what the process would be. Should we invite the Chair, the Chair of the ZBA? Should we work through staff, you know, with Lee working with Daphne? What will be the process for moving forward on that? Or do we just go ahead and make some recommendations and send them to the ZBA? What do you think, Lee? You're muted, Lee.
I would suggest we can either bring him into the board or if there is, you know, one or two of you that are interested in working with myself and Daphne and John Schneider. I don't, I don't know why we couldn't arrange a meeting during the day, find out what his concerns and needs are, and then come back and report to the board about some recommended changes to address it.
I'm happy to work with you on that.
And, and since I've already begun the work and, and I'm interested, I'd be glad to also do that.
We have a draft.
Group is taking up so much time right now, but a daytime meeting just to get it started.
I mean, Daphne had done that early work and we can certainly loop John in and we can just kind of sit down and talk about what the issues are and what some of the strategies might be to solve the problem.
And I.
Mr. Chair, I just want to just slightly off topic, Jean, quick question and also you and Natasha. Is the working group, is the housing working group, do you have to abide by the open meeting laws?
Yes, yes, definitely. Every one of our subgroups have, we've, we've posted our meetings.
The only, the only reason I ask is because in the Climate Action Committee, our working groups have to abide by the open meeting laws. And so that came, initially we were thinking we did not have to. But I just.
No, we do. We, I think.
All committees.
We do, and we have to write meeting notes.
Okay, thank you.
And we have team, we have team agenda planning meetings with our staff. By we, I mean Natasha and I, and we don't consider those agenda planning meetings to be subject to the open meeting law. And the same thing is true of the Planning Board.
Chair, Vice Chair.
Yeah.
And we don't have Quorum either. It's just Jean and I.
Yes.
So I just, to move back here. The with the, Jean, did you ever draft a zoning bylaw amendment?
For the three car garage, the three car garages? I'd have to look back at my materials. I don't think I did. I think I listed or put up in a memo some ideas, but I didn't actually draft an amendment. But that's within my skill set, so.
Given, given the work that you've done, I'd certainly be interested in seeing that through. And given the work that you've already have done on it, clearly it's going to be very helpful. I just want to get a, a bit of a straw pull from the rest of our colleagues. Does everybody support a three car garage by right in the, or not requiring a ZBA special permit in SRA?
And may I add?
I think, I think we're talking SRB.
SRB, it's a lot.
I apologize.
Yes.
SRB.
And I am not necessarily personally recommending by right with no controls. I think we have to consider whether there are certain circumstances where it's sure, why not? Like if the third garage is on the side of the house or at the rear of the house rather than right in the front. And, and those are the kinds of things we'll want to discuss. There may be circumstances under which it should still be a special permit.
Okay.
The, the only, I mean, the only thing that goes through my mind is, 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 is this something that's, and I'm fine, I'm fine if you guys say yes, I appreciate that. Is this something, does this take priority over some of the other things we may want to bring to the May Town meeting? That's all. Is it, is it important enough to take over, override some of the things we may want to bring to the town meeting? That's all.
Good comment.
I'm only concerned because we, we told the ZBA two or three years ago would work on this. And we were reminded several months ago that we said we would, and I feel badly that we haven't.
Well, I, there's, I think there's a, there's a backstory to that though, I think too. Initially, John wanted to do it and then, because he had, he had a lot of cases. And then it became not a huge priority because the caseload went down and he wasn't so concerned. And then it resurfaced. So it's kind of been, it hasn't been a huge, don't feel totally guilty. There was kind of a change of direction at midpoint.
Hopefully we can, you know, we can, we can do more than one item at a time.
May I, I just put my two cents worth in there quickly.
Yes, please, Paul.
I, my, my recollection is basically what Lee said, only I'd go a little bit further. I'd say that after we had some really good discussions at the Planning Board, my recollection is that we did go back to John Schneider and ask him what he thought of what we had discussed and he never got back to us.
Maybe.
Yeah. And, and so, you know, it wasn't totally there. I also think that we've done so much work on this already as, as has the ZBA. And it has been a few years. I don't, I don't see why we can't do this in, in addition to our pressing items that we want to get done quickly.
Agreed.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think this is going to take precedence over something else.
And I don't think it's going to be particularly controversial either as far as bringing something before the town meeting that will take a lot of time.
Well, I don't know that we ever have something in front of town.
Yeah. I appreciate your optimism, Jean. So returning back to our agenda, I don't see we have minutes that the course, I'll come back to reports in a minute. The correspondence that I recall we received.
Aren't you moving on too quickly?
What's that? Sorry, I said it again.
Isn't there a possibility to, to consider, like in response to what Paul said and Artie too, I think, aren't there other things that we want to move forward in this long, what we're calling long range planning to try to get before town meeting next year? Have we finished that discussion?
I think we had that discussion last Thursday.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I mean, I mean, I'd love, I'd love to see the possibility of us bringing your three by law. I know, I know.
We already have that, we already have that on the list. We already talked about that last week. We have a plan to move that forward.
And ADUs, right?
Well, ADUs, I think is, is the other piece. I think that we could easily, we could do this spring. And I think it would be a shame if we didn't do it. It's already been delayed.
2022. Really? That'd be great. So many people are asking for that.
Not 2022, 2023. So there, there will be others. And what I would like to see us do is every three weeks, us as a, as a planning board, take the time to consider these and other items that will be able to advance in various shapes. So I certainly encourage all members of the public. You know, if they have comments and questions about either any of the policies of the planning board or practices of the planning board, if they would like to see reform, if they would like to see reform on our policies and our bylaws, we would strongly encourage you, submit your emails to the board and we may invite you to come in to talk to us. Our planning, our email address, I think, is planning@needhamma.gov. I finally got that right. So for anyone listening and watching tonight, our email address again is planning@needhamma.gov. And we strongly encourage you to participate in the process. We welcome your participation and any zoning reform you'd like to see. Please do comment and follow us along in our process. And we would love to have you participate, you know, here in person too, as we move forward. So now with that, Jean, because this is not the only time that we will discuss this, but we'll make sure to put it again on the schedule in the, in the short term. I don't recall we have minutes for tonight. The correspondence that we have received is a, a letter from Town Council dated October 12, 2022, written to the Finance Committee with respect to the Brew Pub and Microbrewery zoning, Article 8 at this special town meeting in October, in which a question came up from a member of the Finance Committee whether the zoning adheres to the uniformity required. adheres to the uniformity requirement of Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, subsection 4. And it is the opinion of Town Council that this article remains compliant with the uniformity requirement. So the other items I saw for correspondence included, I think, from the town, from the city of Newton, some ZBA files, announcements and notices. Lee, did you want to speak to those of note?
Uh, no, I just put those in for informational purposes for the board, so they understood some of the projects that were going forward in Newton.
Thank you very much. And I don't think there was other correspondence. Am I missing anything? So now we come to the report from the Planning Director and Board Members. Firstly, I'll turn to you, and then I'll come to the Board Members. Lee, do you have any reports for us at this time, or Alex?
Well, sure. I just want you, well, we had the, we had the meeting with the select board on the presentation of the housing plan last week, and the Housing Working Group is now scheduled to meet, I think it's a week from, I think it's a week from this coming week. What day was that, Alex? I didn't write it down on my calendar. But I think at that meeting, we're going to review the comments we got and prepare for the community workshop. Also, just so you know, the, the departmental budget is due next Tuesday. So I've been spending a lot of my time putting all that together, which is the, the, the planning boards, or the departments submitting for funding for the next fiscal year, which is going to include not only the departmental budget, but is also going to include, we go going forward with the Small Repair Grant Program, and a change in how we actually fund the housing specialists, because we're no longer able to fund that position out of CPC, given a legal ruling that came down from Town Council. So I'm working on that, because the draft budget is due next week, Tuesday. And also, I'll be in town meeting coming up next week, Monday. So historically, we've met before town meeting, just in case something comes up. So I wanted to talk to you about how you'd like to facilitate that. If we want to meet maybe late afternoon on Zoom prior to town meeting, Alex and I can set that up. What would work for people?
We usually meet in a basement room of the Town Hall, but could we have a, can we have a, an in-person meeting that doesn't, that we've advertised as an in-person meeting that doesn't have any Zoom component? We can do that under the law, can't we?
Yes, we can do that. That would be difficult for me. That's why I was suggesting, that was why I was asking whether or not the other alternative would be available for you.
24th, Monday. I have a meeting, a, a meeting from two, two to four at least that day in Wausau, at my church. I'm the chair of the committee, or what we call hearthkeeper, silly words, of a committee that's meeting that afternoon on Monday.
Which day is this?
Monday, the day of town meeting, and I am tied up from two, two to four, and then I have to get home from Wausau, so it's really 4:30. It's really at 1:30 to 4:00, excuse me.
Can you remind me the date? I know it's Monday, but what?
The 24th.
It's the 24th. So we have one article on the warrant, which is the brewery article.
Any comments in my presentation, anyone?
Did you add anything in there? Remember, I was talking about it's important to talk about objections, to talk about objections. Has anything been added about talking about objections?
So I think, like we talked about, I, and I spoke to a number of, I think I spoke to Town Council, and I spoke to our Communication Information Officer and some other town officials. And I think our job is, is to act as the proponent.
So you're, so you're adding no objections. So you're, you're adding no objections, which is important. I mean, I, I, I said I'd worked with you on this, and I made a couple of comments, you know, a couple of comments, but it, it's important for the public to see, to have you talk about objections and the reasons why, the reasons that the pros and cons, the reasons why it's okay, for example, the reasons why it's okay, the wording in there about, you know, the entertainment inside, why is it okay to not, the, the inverse, why it's okay not to have the inverse? It's important to talk about that. So you're just, so nothing, nothing's been changed. Nothing's been changed in the presentation. Just stick and stick to the same, I'm going to phrase it this way, stick to the same game plan. I, because I object to that to the town very much, so that we, the game plan being is only talk about the pros, never talk about the cons. I, I, I object to that from a public standpoint. It's not, I don't find it very, I find it very dis, dis, disingenuous when you, when we don't talk about the pros and cons. It's not our job to defeat our article, but it's our job to inform the public of why we're doing certain things, you know, like why we didn't put in it, you know, why we put in it the wording that live entertainment inside is allowed, and what that means as far as not having outside entertainment. Because I support, I support the article, but I want to inform the public what's going on.
I, I, I think it's impossible to predict any and all objections. I think that if people have comments on the article and questions, that they'll raise that at town meeting. They may not have any. And we've used our best judgment in following our ordinary process that included opportunities and for public comment. In the zoning bylaw, we were sensitive to that. And we can certainly speak to any questions that come up. There is a frequently asked question section as well, which is posted on our website, I think, Alex, relating to the article that I, so I, I, I think it's difficult as a matter of practice, and I think the role of the, of a proponent is to present, is to present a dispassionate proposal, which is to say, to lay out what the changes to the zoning bylaw are. And, you know, here, we're changing the uses, and then we're changing the locations, and that that's to be, that's the core information. And, you know, the origin of this.
The best, the best way to success is, you know, the best, the definitely best way for the democratic process and success is to make sure we address things. You know, we're not talking about addressing every possible scenario. And the fact is.
Why not? Why not?
Because you just said it's impossible to address every possible scenario. So I'm, I'm not.
So how do you, so how do you choose which one?
Let me finish. So I'm not talking about addressing every possible scenario. I'm talking about the ones that are our best guess of what some objections to be. That, that's what, that's what any, anything should always be. What are some of the objections? And address them in advance to the public of what's going on, and give, and give us, give our best answer of why we believe these objections, why, why we, why the, this article does not create, just create an obstacle. And here's an objection. Here's why it's okay. Here's why it still works. So it's, it's, that's our responsibility as well.
Artie, what objections are you talking about?
I'm, I'm talking, I'm simply talking, I'm simply talking about, you know, and again, I'm not talking about anything big. And I said, I still support, I'm just talking.
What are you talking about?
I'm talking about something as simple as, why is the language in there that says live entertainment is allowed inside? Does that mean, you know, for example, does that mean there's no live entertainment allowed outside? I'm, I'm, that's all I'm talking about.
Artie, if somebody, if somebody wants to question that, they can question it on town meeting. But, you know, we, we have time constraints, okay? We have, we have a presentation. We're allowed to give a presentation by video, and then if you saw.
Moderator, the moderator, town moderator.
Right, right. The moderator's rules. We can present another five minutes. Now, if we're going to go through and try to find every possible objection.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Somebody, that, that somebody might make for us to address. That's not how you present an argument, Marty. That's, Artie. That's not how you, that's, that's not how you win somebody over. I understand that you think it is, but, you know, we're presenting what we've already determined after having hearings, after having open meetings, where, where town meeting members and other, and other town people had the ability to be at our meetings, had the ability to be at, at the public hearing, and there were plenty of people at the, at the public hearing, and we heard many, many comments, and we addressed them, and we even changed our, our proposed bylaw because of it. And, and the floor of town meeting, to get into that and spend a half hour to start talking about what we think might possibly be objections by people, is, no, we just don't have the time to do it. Otherwise, you know, we'll, we'll be there for a week and a half.
Okay, number, number, number one, I support the article. I'm sure it'll do fine. Okay, number one. Number two, when, when I, this article in the presentation is fairly short, as it stands, it's not, it's not very long. Number three, it is always good practice, always, we all know, I probably know this, I, I'm sorry, I shouldn't put words in the mouth. I believe it is, is, it is standard practice to talk about objections and then to answer them. Because they're going, they're going to be there. I think it's, I think it's standard practice to talk about something, why something's done a certain way. That way, people know in advance before town meeting of why something is done. It's not the end of the world that it's not being talked about, but I do object, I, I do object to the fact that it is standard practice to always hide, I'm going to use the word hide, it is standard practice to not to, I'm going to use the word hide, hide objections. It is not our, it is not our job to get this through town meeting, no matter what it takes. That's not our job. Our job is to educate them, here is, here is our, here's why we want to do it. Here are some things that we do find, that we do find are going to be questions, and here's why we still feel it's the correct thing to do. That's our job. Our job is to present the information and hopefully, when we will get a yes vote, that's our job.
We, we have done that in open meetings that are open to the public and for which we have recordings that people can listen to. We had open, we, we, we had the open hearing where we heard objections, and then we followed up with a, with a meeting where we discussed those items, and we gave our, and we had our discussions about why we made certain decisions, why we decided to make changes, and why we decided to not make changes. And to do that on the floor of town meeting is take a lot of time.
Yeah, but that's not what we're doing.
If somebody, and if somebody, and if somebody wants to find that information, it's available. And if they choose not.
Artie, 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 you've made your point. You've made your point. If you, it sounds like you haven't even seen the presentation. If you want to.
Adam, you said, Adam, you sent me the presentation. I made a couple of comments on the dates, and I looked at it, and I thought it was a good presentation, and I made some comments that I thought we should add. I'm sorry, what, what are you, why are you laughing, Adam? I'm not sure, why are you laughing?
Because, because on the one hand, you've acknowledged that you agreed and accepted the presentation, and then on the other hand, now suddenly, you're, you're saying that while you agreed with it, and it's good that you, that you want to make changes.
As stated, if you were listening, as stated, I said, it was a good presentation. I made the comments that I thought we should add, a couple of objections, and answered a couple of objections. So that's what.
We're asking you which objections you want him to answer, and you haven't come up with them.
Yes, I did. Of course I did.
One, one, whether it's live entertainment outside instead of inside.
Yes, that was, that was the main, that was the main.
That is such an insignificant issue.
That was the main thing.
Artie, we, Artie, you and I talked about that offline, because someone had asked you a question about it, and you had a conversation with town, with Town Council about that, I understand. And I, and we, and you and I talked about that, and you reported back to the town meeting member, which I think is, which I think is a phenomenal execution of our town democracy and our role as town meeting members. If people are still, if people have other additional objections, because that objection has been, has been satisfied. You were satisfied with the answer with it, as you told me in that conversation. So I, so if people, we can anticipate other objections that people may have, and we'll have to address them on town floor.
Clear, if it's not clear, the main thing objection, I'm objecting to right now is the fact that we, we, we think we should never address objections in our proposals. That's what it sounds like I'm being told. And that, and that, in my opinion, that is the incorrect way to present an article, to never, never present objections. That's what I'm talking about. I understand what, we can't spend a lot of time doing it. I understand it's not our job to defeat our article. Okay? But I object to the fact that we should never put objection.
Objection, objection noted, objection noted.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. That's all I care about.
Can we get back to trying to set a time for our meeting?
Yes, thank you, Gene.
I propose 5:00 PM. Would that, would that work for everyone for a quick Zoom meeting?
On, I just.
I have a, I might be a little after 5:00. It might be closer to 5:15 or 5:30. I've, to take my son to a doctor's appointment.
Well, then, how about?
Which is that? What's that?
How about 5:30 for everyone?
As long as, as long as the doctor's not delayed, it should be fine.
I, I need to check with my husband, because that's my pickup day. He usually works later. I can text him right now, but if we do earlier in the day, I'm definite, or a little later, I'm definite. But that's a time where I can't confirm without checking with him.
I'm good in the morning.
Noon.
What's that?
Noon, 12:00 PM, noon.
That's, that should be fine for me.
So it worked for others?
What day you taught, I'm sorry, what day?
Monday.
This coming, this coming Monday?
Yeah, basically.
The 24th, right? I can do, I can do noon to 12:30.
Basically, Artie, what we need to do is, we need to open our meeting and then suspend our meeting without adjourning, so that if we need to discuss things and have a vote on things during town meeting as a planning board, because those of us who will be there will be sitting together. We, we have a, a, a planning board meeting that has been posted and on which we can do it, so.
And I, I'm, I'm open.
Monday, Monday at noon works, works for me. Noon, 12:15 maybe, because I, I have a Zoom meeting that ends around 11:45.
12:15 would work better.
Yeah.
So are we able to send out, Alex is going to send out a Zoom invite?
Yeah.
And then lastly, now that we've resolved that item, Artie, if you have, if you're aware of other objections to our zoning bylaw, it would be helpful as a proponent if you could write those objections up, and then also write some notes to be able to address those objections. That would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll think, if there's anything else I can think about, I'm, I'll think of it, and I'll send, I'll send you something.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Are we talking 12:15 or 12 on Monday now?
12:15.
Yeah.
And I'm not putting it on my calendar, because I, I'm expecting I'll get something from Alex.
Happening as we speak.
Yep.
Wonderful. Unless we have any other business before us.
Yeah, I, I would, I would like to raise an issue about town meeting, about the foster property.
Oh, yes, good.
Because this is kind of spiraling. I'm not going to say it's spiraling out of control, but it's certainly, it's certainly spiraling. And I, I'm just wondering whether we, as a planning board, want to take a position for town meeting. We've got, in my mind, we've got two elements. And even though there's one element in front of town meeting, which is funding the potential purchase of conservation land, or open space, because it hasn't been designated as conservation land. That's really what's in front of town meeting, but neighbors seem to feel that the 70-unit complex is in front of town meeting. And to some extent, as a practical. Um, and to some extent, as a practical matter, it kind of is. Um. There. My thought is that as a planning board. We're kind of in favor of what's being proposed because we're trying to encourage. Um. Um.
Correct.
Smaller units. Affordable, not really. You using the word affordable has double meanings here, and it's not affordable in in the sense of low income. Or even eighty percent of median income. We, we want to encourage. Something that you can buy, something that's not. A million and a half or two million dollar, single family home in town. So that seniors or young families, young couples, young families can afford to buy something in town. Especially seniors who want to stay in town after selling their homes.
Paul, can you, can you remind me of the of the of the what the cost it will be of those units? Did they, did they share that with us?
Um, not. You know, I don't know that it's really been totally developed. If you go to the, if you go to the town meeting website. You know, the, the, the town's website has, um, uh, th- there is a concept plan. That's there that you can click on and see um, where the. Where the condo units would be built, where the conservation land, with where the open spaces that would go to the town is, and it. It, it does have something of, of a. Of of a drawing of seventy condo units and they do look like they're close, you know, it's, they're squeezed together. But you know, that's um. Um, when, when I got home tonight, there was a. There was a flyer in my mailbox. You can't really see it. Not signed by any particular individual. Um, but it's clearly a neighborhood group who does not want to see the condos put in there. Um, and I read through this and I feel that unfortunately. Um, these people do not know the process, which I don't expect them to know the process, but they don't know the process. Um, because as I said, what's in front of town meeting is just, are you going to vote for two and a half million dollars? To be spent to purchase open space if it's available. Um, you know, there's a lot to be done. I mean, people, people are complaining that there hasn't been a traffic study, that there hasn't been an environmental impact study. Um. That, 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 that there hasn't been meetings with neighbors. All those, in my opinion, are premature for the condo complex. Um, but you know, i- it's. I don't, I'm, I'm just, my, my, my purpose tonight is to ask whether we as a board want to speak. In favor of the concept of we're trying, we as a, as a planning board. Want to encourage the development of condo complexes, especially where they have an affordable housing component. To it, and it has. Um, age appropriate component to it for. Seniors who wish to downsize and young families who wish to find. Housing that's affordable for them to move into need them, or whether we just want to stay silent at this point. And I know it's awfully, you know, it's, it's less than a week in front of us.
I, um, I have some thoughts, but I, I first I'm gonna turn to Jean and then I'm gonna turn to Artie. Jean?
Yes, um, I went on the tour um, this um, Sunday afternoon, as did Paul. And I had been to the site before a couple of times, simply as, you know, enjoying going for a walk in our lovely woods and wetlands. Um, and um. I I'm surprised, Paul, that you said we should, um, we should take a position on the. Possible development of the land that's to be sold privately.
I'm not saying we should, I'm questioning whether.
Yeah, yeah, because you started out by saying the, the issue is whether we want to purchase this land for conservation purposes. And and that's what's before town meeting. And I would like to take a position in favor of that. Um, you know.
That element of it.
Yeah, we value our open space. Um, look at the, and you know, I was very disappointed in the subdivision on the other side of um, Chestnut Street. Um, not far from this, you know, um, where, you know, you had the two, the two. Sub, the subdivisions, I forget the name of the street, the one, the big subdivision we worked on within the past couple of years.
Heather Lane?
What's that?
Heather Lane?
Heather Lane, yes. And we were trying to negotiate. At least the grant of an easement to allow people to walk um, down to the river and along the river. And our conservation uh, um, department wasn't even pushing for that. I was kind of disappointed. So we got a conservation restriction out of that. But the restriction merely restricts development in a wetland area that's restricted anyway. Here, we actually got land that people in our town can walk on forever. And enjoy the bluebird meadow and. We want to support that, don't we? And for only two and a half million, this is huge.
But Jean, it says that they, that for right now it's that use, but it could be a different municipal use in the future.
That's a very important issue. Um, Paul, um, didn't you say, or I overheard you say?
Um. I intend.
Yeah.
Separate from the planning board, this is why I didn't want to mention it now as an individual. Um, Natasha, my intention is to make two motions to amend. One is to. Um. Add the language that they currently have for the two, three, three acre lots. To the twenty four, twenty four, twenty eight acres. For the intention that it be conservation land and cannot be used for municipal purposes. And a second motion for all three sections to make it clear that. Control is given to the Conservation Commission. Adding, adding language that references the Conservation Commission statute.
Mm-hmm.
For, for the three parcels, that would remove the possibility of. Um, putting a municipal building there. Although I've been told and looking at the map, I can understand it. That is a practical matter, they can't put a municipal building there because it's, there's, there's lack of access. My answer to that is some, some bright architect, including one who's sitting here, can always find a way. To figure out how to get the access. Um, and the opposite of that is. Um, the select board wants to bank the twenty four acres so that they can. Trade it for current conservation land, which is a requirement of the Commonwealth. Um, when you take land out of conservation, art, art of Article ninety seven, the, of the state constitution. You have to come, you have to put into conservation in Article ninety seven, an equal, an equal amount of acreage, well. My attitude is great, so now you feel like you've got twenty four, twenty eight acres, so let's, so let's take fifteen acres out of Ridge Hill. And put a municipal building at Ridge Hill, because we've got, we've got acreage across the street, this landlocked that we can substitute for it.
An indoor, an indoor hockey rink. Wasn't that a proposal that was floated and at, at Ridge Hill?
Which could be a hockey rink, and it's not just Ridge Hill, it could be at the town forest.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, I think that's exactly what, um.
And so.
The reason they want to have that for general municipal purposes, it wouldn't need any legislative approval. Um, to use it, to, 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 to trade it for some other land and say, now, we're gonna.
Oh, it would.
We're gonna restrict this now for conservation in compensation for using that other land. Or a hockey rink or whatever. Yeah.
Well, you know, I do plan on making those proposals. I'm thinking about, in my speech, talking about the condominiums. Um, because one of the things that's mentioned here is that they'll come in and they'll clear cut with a seventy eight, with a seventy. Condo units are gonna go, and my answer to that is we don't have a tree by law. If this doesn't go through somebody, then, then the whole sixty four acres can be sold to a developer who can go in there and just clear cut the entire sixty four acres. And they will clear cut the six acres that are on Charles River Street.
Those six acres are very.
Six buildable lots.
Those six acres right up there in Charles River Street, opposite um, the Ridge Hill Reservation. Um, if they're preserved, that preserves that, the whole look of that whole stretch of street. As a, as a, as a preserve, as an open space resource. Um, whereas if they get built on, you could, you know, you know, with the acre zoning, you could have three graping homes here and three big graping homes there. Um, all I, I'm making a pitch here, saying, I think that there's good reason for us to support this. Even if we don't go so far as to be supporting Paul's amendments. Um, because even though the floodplain area, what I call the Bluebird Meadow. Um, it will likely always be used for open space in the future because it really can't be built on. Even if it's used to trade for some other parcel that, of conservation land that the town wants to use. You know, that's a separate issue in a way. All I'm doing is, Paul, is separating the issues. We could, we can support the acquisition. As a planning board, because we want to see this open.
It's, I mean.
Right?
In theory, but it's tend to mount to failure.
Failure?
I hope, I hope not, but um, I understand. I understand um, the clarity, Paul, that you're looking to create with the amendments. And I'm not gonna stand in your way to, you know, to make those amendments. Um. I hope that, and I know this is a controversial subject. I fear that although there are some valid concerns or questions. That uh, if the town meeting opposes this. And then the by right solution is a consequence, town meeting is gonna have to live with. And uh, which is the antithesis of what this board supports, so. My two cents, but Paul, uh, Artie, go ahead, you would, your hand up as well.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm really not certain why we're separating this purchase of this land from the. Condo units looking to be built by the developer by North, North, North.
They're not really separate.
That's right, I'm, I'm, but I'm starting to why we're, we're making it sound like they are, they're very much linked together. So um, so a couple of things. One is, you know, you know, that we, we've had a stance and the towns have a, have a stance that when you, when, when projects, if developments are going in. We look for a certain percentages of affordable housing units. From everything I hear, then all that's being looked at here is seven percent affordable housing units, not the ten or twelve that we normally look at. So that's a little, that's a little outrageous, outrageous in my mind of why that's, that's the only amount that's being looked at. Because that's, that's everything I've read, everything I've heard, that's what it is. Um, the other thing is, um. The, I mean, the owners, the current owners of this property, they do have a, certainly the parents of them. Did have a high regard to conservation land, and and as Jean, as you point out, that lower, lower section going down to the river is not likely ever gonna be. Developable and can't be developable. And so what the town is then doing is buying land which can't be developed. Which means it takes it out of the tax base from the developer, so they're not paying the town taxes on that land. And we're, we're buying it from them. So that's, that's one thing that's going on.
Oh, six acres up by the road, can you?
I am, no, I understand this, I understand six acres up by the loan. Uh, no, I can appreciate that. Okay, so I can appreciate that.
May I suggest, because I don't have clarity myself, but I did hear Janet Bernardo say something. Um, when I was on the walk, that indicated that it may be possible to develop part of that meadow.
Well, there, there's, there's a lot of things that are gonna be thrown around. One of the, one of the things being thrown around is if we don't do anything, the whole thing's clear cut. Everything's clear cut. Well, okay, I just, I, I, I just, I hate living in this fear factor way of promoting stuff. The same thing happened, you know, I won't phrase it, then it's happened before. I hate living in that fear factor aspect of it. These certainly current owners of the property don't want that to be happening.
No, Artie, I'm gonna tell you what I heard.
Yes.
I heard that there are two children.
Yep.
One of whom has the same conservation concerns as his parents.
Mm-hmm.
And would like to see the town get some of the property.
Mm-hmm.
The other child is only interested in selling the property for the highest possible price.
I think, hold on, hold on, Paul, I'm interrupting here. I'm interrupting everybody.
Why?
Right, because, Artie, I, I think we're, we're getting a little far afield in our britches on this. This is not a forum for us to discuss, you know, our, our feelings and hearsay. I don't doubt what you're saying, Paul. But I don't think this is the forum or the, you know, the responsibility of the planning board. I think the question before the planning board. Is, do we take a position to formally approve this? And if so, what weight will that have, given the hour of taking this matter up? Um, and what forum do we communicate the planning boards? Um. Uh, you know, result of a vote if we decide to take one.
Well, okay.
Uh, Lee, how, how would we communicate that?
Let me, let me finish, so let me finish, let me finish. A lot of people have been saying a lot of things. Let me finish. I mean, Paul and I were both on the Conservation Commission. We want, you know, clearly, it's, it's clearly Paul's talking in the sense that we want conservation land. I want, I want conservation land. Okay, I, I'm just in the mindset that um, I do not think we need to spend our money to get, to have, to get some of this.
Artie, this is not the forum. Artie, I'm not. I'm ruling you out of order. You're challenging the chair. I've ruled you out of order. That's it. That's it. I don't allow you.
Talking.
Artie, Artie, that's, no, I'm not. You're out of order.
No.
The chair recognized, the chair does not recognize Artie.
Too much, let me just.
Yes, uh, Artie, this is not the forum and the place. You're disregarding the authority of the chair.
Saying.
Don't, if you don't cease and desist, I'm gonna have you removed from the meeting. If you're not gonna follow the forum of the board, I'm not. Artie, I'm not. Artie, I'm not.
Okay, we'll, we'll have, we'll have words about this.
I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn the meeting if you cannot abide by the, by the rules of the board. And how we conduct our meetings. That's true for all of us. I interrupted Paul and I stopped Paul. And I would do so to anyone else because otherwise it's equally disrespectful. The chair was clear, this is not the forum for our personal discussion and, and, and our own. Uh, and our own observations on this subject matter. The only issue before the board at this hour with respect to this item. Is whether or not the planning board is going to take up a vote to either support this or not. That's the only item already in front of us. And my question to Lee was, Lee. How would that, at this hour, how would we communicate? Uh, the board's vote, if we did take a vote, what forum does that take at town meeting?
You probably contact town, the town moderator and ask to be recognized to speak in favor of the article.
Okay.
You would, you would, you would just say that the planning board took, took a vote.
Okay, so I. Do, uh, Nat- uh, Natasha, would you like to speak, so would you like to make a motion or speak to the?
I just wanted to say, I think, I think we should support it, but I think we should think about what the seventy, you know. What, what's coming next, which is the seventy units and how that, that's gonna come about. Um, but I think we should support it.
I think we should support it as well, and, and when it comes to the development, I want to understand better. The applicability of the so-called friendly forty B process. the applicability of the so-called friendly forty B process. I was saying, oh, they have to have twenty percent um, or even twenty five percent affordable. And it turns out I'm wrong. Um, but I don't understand it. Um, has the, has the forty B process changed since when I used to?
I had the same understanding, Jean, that you had. Karen Sonneborg and I had the same understanding. She wrote a lot, a lot of the papers that we're actually talking about how the lip was supposed to be applied. But there's some ambiguity in the language. And as I understand it, the council for the developer and our town council has spoken with the appropriate people of DHCD. And their interpretation is then in the context of how this is being proposed, um, it can be below the twenty five percent level.
It's, it's an amazing thing, really, because, you know, it's up, it's usually up to the planning board to prove subdivisions. And we've got a cluster zoning by law. And, you know, we've got all these.
No, they're, they're outside the zoning rules. I mean, so that's why they're doing.
Completely, yeah, it's completely outside the zoning rules. Um,
Well, that's why.
To have the level of affordability that is what usually justifies being outside the um, zoning rules.
Cause I understand.
I just wish I understood it better to speak.
I agree, Jean.
Yeah, that's, that's the objects, I mean, objection I have.
I would suggest you follow up with Chris Heap. He had the conversation with um, the person that administers the program for DHCD and their council. Um, and he can probably tell you the specific portions of the statute where the ambiguous language sits.
Would it be all right if, if I or we, uh, Natasha and I, if, if these are the two, since we're on the housing plan working group, we should.
I mean, I'm concerned about what's gonna be built there and the affordability and I mean, is it gonna continue? Now you're gonna have seventy more problems, right? Like to make, you know, now we're gonna go from one point five, four million up. I just, I don't understand what, you know, what planning and zoning, what, what um, responsibility or what our purview is for this, for this land.
Contacting town council always costs money, so I don't want to say we can just do it.
Well, it might be worth it.
You know my attitude on that, Jean. I've got no problem with the lawyer.
If Lee says we may do it.
People use town council for things they shouldn't be using it. I think this is one.
I'll, 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 I'll contact Chris because um, um, and I'll set up a time for the two of you and myself to to meet with him. He had mentioned to me, he told me, because I, I pushed back, I said, you know, the rule's twenty five percent. Where are they coming up with this number? Um, and he said he thought that the law read the same way. Um, and he said there was a specific provision in the law that the, where the language was not clear and DHCD, the person who's in charge of implementing the program, indicated that DHCD would issue a site eligibility letter for a proposal as it was being proposed here with this lower affordability threshold. And then get it in front of the TBA.
Is it going to be age restricted or not?
Yes, supposedly.
No, 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 age, age targeted is not age.
Age target is not age restricted.
It's not, it's usually DHCD opposes age restrictions.
So I have a question.
They're gonna market it to seniors. I believe they're also gonna market it to young families.
Mm hmm, you're right, okay.
Natasha, you had a question?
Yeah.
Understand this so that we can report back to the committee at the meeting on twelve fifteen on Monday. Could we, we can arrange a talk with?
I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to Chris and see what time I can make work. Natasha, you're always the hard person, so let me know what times work for you and I'll work, what, and we'll try to work around you.
Just send me some times and yeah, I'll send you some time. So I, I guess what I'm getting to is if we don't agree with it, the town may not have the opportunity to have this land because they're gonna sell it to the developer anyway, right?
They're not gonna sell it to this developer. Because this developer is not prepared to, to pay in full what the foster family wants.
But they could find another developer to share it.
Fact, plus the fact that if we're not getting the conservation land, why should we approve the seventy units?
No, I guess my question is, i- if, if we, if the town, if, if town meeting doesn't approve it, what will happen to the property?
I think.
Well, it, it might just go back on the market.
Right, so a developer could buy it and develop the whole thing.
Yes.
Well, there's, there's already, there's already been one developer that came and went.
Yeah.
That's true.
That's one.
I mean, you have, you, you have the two lots on Charles River Street, which are very easy A and R lots. I mean, those, those six lots would be very easy to subdivide and put houses on. And those lots themselves have trails that have been used by people historically, which.
Right, no, I understand. I'm just trying to figure out, okay, so I, I, I mean, the whole.
And the other parcel, the other, the other parcel is subdividable. You can bring a subdivision road in and subdivide it. I think it's just really a question of how many buildable lots would you get? One of the issues they have there is they, you know, there's a dead end street limit here and they probably, in order to get the maximum out, they would probably need to bring a road out to Whitman Road and there are access issues there that are, there are constraints. I mean, the Bell Lane subdivision ultimately found a connection to Whitman Road, which is why they got a long dead end street in that location. So you probably see it just, you know, subdivided into conventional, single family lots.
Yeah, I've heard like maybe twenty six. You know, that's, that's kind of like what I thought before is, is it can be like twenty six units versus, you know, versus seventy.
But whatever it is, until we get a tree by law, a developer could come in and say, okay, I'm, I'm gonna get twenty six house lots and here's where I'm gonna put them. And he comes in with a bulldozer and just takes down all the trees.
Mm hmm.
And believe, and and from what I've seen of the topography, those trees are gonna be right behind Whitman Road. So if the Whitman Road residents think that they're gonna preserve the woods behind Whitman Road by opposing what's happening next Monday, I think they're totally wrong because I think that's, that's where the trees are gonna come out so that they can put in single family houses.
So let us return to the, the question in front of us. It sounds like we're, it sounds like um, and Artie, I see your hand is still up. I'll come back to you in a second.
My, my, no, my apologies. That meant to come down.
So my. One of us right now, Adam, is something that I've raised that would, that we should further discuss on Monday at twelve fifteen.
Yes, exactly. Okay, so we're resolved that, that Lee will coordinate with Natasha and Jean an opportunity for them to discuss uh, with town council. And then we'll resolve at that meeting next Monday. Uh, um, at our meeting next Monday, uh, before town meeting, whether the town, whether we will adopt, uh, whether we'll take up a vote. And if so, what the vote is, and then we'll uh, speak to it at town meeting.
Are, are we, are we basing this partially, Mr. Chair, are we basing this partially or greatly on what the answer is in, as in, if, if the town meeting votes for this money, I think that's tentamount to also agreeing to what the select board is trying to accomplish. And that's in agreement with the developer to allow the seven units, seven units with essentially possibly only five affordable units. That's, that's my understanding. That we're.
May I ask, Artie, um, I, I I just want to understand, uh, I know that I purchased, I, at least I was told that they're still working on a purchase and sale agreement, the town is. Um.
No, the town is not, the developer is.
Oh, the developer is, okay.
Developer.
Do you think there's actually going to be a binding, I can't imagine a binding agreement between the select board that they will approve of, of forty B development?
That's, that's the question to Chris Heap and that's, that's what I'm concerned about.
Hearings.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's the only, the only way the developers, is the only way this is coming about is, is mine is if I was a developer, the only way I would then agree to pay the money, the certain money to the town, is if I had an agreement in hand that I could do what I want to do. The seven units.
I agree with Artie.
That's the only way this is happening.
But Artie, it's not up to the select board. It's in front of the zoning board of appeals. And to some extent, it's, it's in front of a state agency.
Well, no, it's, it's, the select board has to be a partner with the friendly lip. I mean, they, I think they, they need to sign off on the proposal, um.
They are the gatekeepers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that.
So we're gonna get clarity on this.
Then allows it to go to the zoning board.
Yeah, that's why.
Always kind of making the agreements on developments in Needham.
Well, they're not all the same, but I think when it comes to forty B projects, I think they have a certain level of participation, especially here where they're, what's that?
Friendly forty Bs.
Yeah.
There's only been one friendly forty B in Needham. And that was the uh, rest home next to the congregation church. Um, that's the one.
Wasn't the Kendrick, wasn't, what, wasn't the large?
Yeah, they were both, they were both friendly forty Bs, the Kendrick and.
Yeah, I thought.
They were?
Yeah.
Anywho.
I did not realize that. Oh, my goodness.
The two, the two large apartment buildings that's, that's in Needham Crossing, the industrial park area.
They were all negotiated.
Does someone?
Forty Bs.
That were done in the forty Bs. I did not realize that, sorry.
Does someone want to make a motion to adjourn or there's more items?
We're having a good discussion now.
Okay, keep going, keep talking, keep discussing.
Well, I mean, I, I think it, I think it does bring up a good, a good point as far as what, you know, where is the, where does, where is authority? You're talking about authority being taken away, you know? Where is the, our authority taken away? And if our authority is being taken, sent to being taken away?
What you mean by, what do you mean by our?
Well, well, the planning board to some degree, the planning board authority is taken away as far as any, any division going on there by a vote at town meeting.
It's not in our authority to begin with.
It's not in our authority at all.
Well, well, I mean, no sub, no subdivision there would ever be in our.
Oh, a subdivision, a developer's subdivision would come to us.
Yes. Yes.
But not, but this type of a development.
But this. Forty B goes to the ZBA.
But that's, that's where they are. That's what I'm saying, Paul. If, if, if the town meeting votes on this, all of a sudden, you know, we're giving approval of something that we, you know, at this point, we still don't even know what's going, what it is we're approving. So that, and, and, and it's something, and it's something that we wouldn't necessarily want to approve if it's only about seven percent affordable housing. That's, that's my concern, Mr. Chair.
What's in front of town, what's in front of town meeting is, and there will, and I would, there has to be an agreement between the developer and the select board on, on, on this eventually.
Yeah, right.
But I imagine that what, what, what the agreement is going to be is that if the developer gets his approvals of the friendly forty B, he will sell the twenty eight acres that is designated for open space to the town for two point five million dollars. And what's in the town meeting is to give the select board the knowledge that they have the two point five million dollars in hand to be able to enter into that agreement with development.
Perfect, perfect, Paul.
Yes.
I can see that that would all be lawful. What, what I had imagined was the select board saying, we will grant, you know, the approval and the zoning vote of appeals will approve it. Of course, they can't promise that.
Of course they can't.
Yeah, but if they grant it, then.
Then, then we get the conservation, the, the open space land for two and a half million dollars.
And that's how they're tied together. Okay. That makes sense.
Any further discussion?
But as Lee pointed out, if the select board isn't in agreement with the developer, then there's nothing to take to the, to, to the ZBA.
I understand that, but, but the, but that's how this whole thing came about. Is at this point, this is select which has been in agreement with the developer with the plan, the, the ethereal plan that's been out there.
Yes.
Which is seventy units with seven, possibly seven, possibly seven, some affordable housing. That's what, that, that's what we have to take in. That's what we have to take as faith, as faith at this point, because that's where it's been.
That, that's ten percent and that's the.
No, no, seven, no, seven, no.
Windgate and that Carter's building.
No, seven, there was only five affordable housing units out of seven.
Oh, I thought you said seven.
Five units, that's all they were proposing? I didn't, I don't recall seeing that, but I'll.
That's everything, everything I've read and heard is that's seven percent.
That's not very good.
No. That, that's, that's where my, that's where my brain.
Hearing back from Jean and Natasha with the as to their conversation with Chris Heap, that issue.
So we're clear and resolved in the direction. All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Uh, Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Natasha Spata?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Glad you're feeling.